Record, get this all going. Welcome, welcome everyone to a very special day, very special announcement, very important things to discuss. I'm gonna be taking you all, muting one by one. I appreciate everyone that is here. And thank you for taking time of your Saturdays and we'll get to it. It's up KK, good, good, good. All right. Okay, everyone, here we go. All right, so we are here today. Rosio's obviously here with Santi and yet Santi is almost nine months old. So he's probably running around eating something he's not, it's undigestable and Rosio's running around with him and Suzie's with me and George is here always to take pictures and also if we want to make him do some burpees, you know. I know, but in all seriousness, we have something very beautiful and wonderful to share and thank you guys for showing up, those of you that are live and those of you that will be watching this, I am also expressing and sharing a very much bit of gratitude for taking time to watch this. This is very important to us and so without further ado, we are here today as the official passing of the torch of O'Hare CrossFit. And I'm very excited to share this moment with you guys and I'm very excited to share with you the story of how we even got to this point of my life. And so first and foremost, the passing of O'Hare CrossFit goes to someone that deserves it better than anyone on this planet. And we are super excited to announce that Suzie is now managing partner, she's gonna step in here on a little step stool, of O'Hare CrossFit. And we will be working side by side together, Suzie and I, and Suzie eventually as the sole owner of O'Hare CrossFit. It is her time to step into this beautiful role and this beautiful place and those of you that have been around in the last, what, five years, but more so the last, you know, especially this year has truly seen and probably felt more than ever what type of being is next to me and what she is really capable of doing and stewarding. Because I am in full confidence in saying this, that we would not have even been open right now if Suzie was not a part of our team, we need to steward this unprecedented time. And we are super excited to, to be stepping into this moment and as this void is creating, you know, us stepping away from day-to-day ownership is, there's a void, Suzie stepping into that void stronger than ever. And we are going to talk about the journey or my journey, I'm gonna walk you guys through this last little over a decade of what this is. And I'm super excited to share this with you guys because this is what I've given my life to. So I'm super excited for you guys to have Suzie as your next leader of O'Hare CrossFit. And I'm also very excited and grateful to, to tell you all about my life and what I've experienced. And although, you know, the truth is such a crazy word, right? What is even true to begin with? Yeah, this is the, my truth and you're gonna get it from no other person besides me in the way I see it. So first, everyone, I'm gonna unmute you guys because I want you guys to please, she's gonna speak towards the end of this call, but please give her a big cheer and love because this woman deserves this better than anyone on this planet, I promise.
We're so excited, believe me. We are super excited, we love you.
She needs to hear it because she deserves it. Beautiful. So, thank you guys, I wanted to open up the, the right way to do it and what other way would I do it besides kicking the door anyways? And now, my friend, without further ado, I'm gonna let you know who Angie is and how we got here, okay? All right, I have, I'm gonna put you guys back to muted land. Sorry for the quick unmute to mute. I will be sharing my screen frequently throughout this call. One, to keep you guys engaged and also two, I've taken some time to, to put images together of these moments so we can live them as close together as, as possible, my friends. Okay? All right, so I'm gonna talk about my, my weight loss journey because this is where this all really starts. And so, and, ooh, we're still welcoming on some of our guests, beautiful. So in 2000, in, you know, I guess the weight loss journey really began very early in my life. I've been a lifelong, or I was a lifelong struggler with being overweight. I was never the varsity athlete or any of those things and it was a very big deal in my family for, to be overweight. My father was overweight his life and he also attributes many of his life's early struggles to that and still does to this day. And when he saw that his son was growing up overweight, he could only imagine the scare that created in him and being in prison only heightened his scare and his inability to even help me with it. And I imagine that that is why his lessons came out the way they did. And I'm not here to go back and forth with those, I'm more here to, to share the beautifulness of all this story. So, in 2000 and, I'm gonna share my screen and we're gonna have so much fun. All right, so in 2007, 2008, I was 300 pounds and selling pizza at the time. Let me see, let me find a nice image of that, I have a good one here, let me pull up. Okay, this was me, can everyone see my, let me see, everyone should be able to see my screen, yes, very good. Cool, can everyone see? This, this beautiful hunk of man to your right, that was me in 2008 and at someone's wedding, obviously. And I was really struggling in my life at that time, I really didn't even, what I believe is having an identity, I struggled to even have one. I really didn't know who I was or what I was even doing with my life at that time. And around this time, I saw the movie 300 and, which was a very popular movie when it first came out, those of you that have seen it. And at the time, I was so, I was so amazed by how the, the people looked, the actors looked. Those of you that are familiar with the movie, it was one of the first movies that I could recall in an action movie where, one, the people looked very athletic and two, it wasn't just one guy that was really in shape, it was like this whole group of people that was really in shape. And that really inspired me because when you see like an Arnold Schwarzenegger movie, a Sylvester Stallone movie, for me, it was like, oh, there's one guy that's in really good shape and then there's a bunch of other blokes, right? Like there's, there's people like that. And so I started doing some research and I found this, I found this gym called Jim Jones. Here, I'll show you guys another, another beautiful image of me, please excuse my friend down here, he's Italian, he doesn't know you shouldn't flip people off in pictures, but they're Italian, you know, they got their own rules out there in Italy. But nevertheless, let me, there it is, that's me in all my glory. That was the summer of 2008. And so I started digging into this, digging into this Jim, Jim Jones and I go, man, what is this Jim Jones? What is it all about and what, you know, what is this thing even doing? You know, what is it? And then I started doing more research and those of you that know me or may not know about this is I love doing research on my own. I love digging and finding my own truth to things in my own way of locating them and thinking about them. And so I kept looking at, at this Jim Jones and I found out they were a part of this thing called CrossFit, okay? And so I'm like, man, what's this thing called CrossFit? And so here's, here's me, okay, I'm gonna show you guys another, another great image. This was me at my friend Dom's house and right around Christmas time, okay? And this is when GarageBand first came out and I liked to party, I still liked to party back then, so I painted my face as Kiss and I showed up for the GarageBand party because you better come to a party festive, I don't care if you're 400 pounds or four ounces, you know what I'm saying? So I show up with my face painted and I said, am I on the drums or guitar today? Dom said you're on the guitar and I sat down and got to work, okay? And so this was me right up to the end of that year, okay? And so I, I start looking into CrossFit around this time and I'm still tinkering at it, I'm just looking at it, I don't know what it is yet fully, I'm like, man, what's going on? What are we doing? And I stumble upon this video and I want you guys, I'm gonna put it on, it's like a four-minute video and I really want you to see it because this was a huge, this was a huge turning point for me to watch this video. This was the video that made me know, or not made me know, but gave me the, it helped my brain identify what I wanted my body to look like, right? I had that motorcycle accident in 2003, I was limping around, I was 300 pounds, I was selling pizza at the time, which was great, I have a picture of that as well, I'll show you guys in a second. And, and I stumbled upon this video called King Kong. Now this were, by a guy named Josh Everett. Now, once upon a time in CrossFit land, before the famous like Rich Froni and Matt Fraziers, Josh Everett was like the coolest guy in CrossFit in 2008, 2009, like he was the one you wanted to be. And I watched this video, I must have watched this video, I don't know, hundreds of times, it's, it's crazy to think how many times I've watched this video. And when I was watching it, I, I just imagined how cool it was to, let me put these on just so the sound stays really good because my boy Santi likes to carry a couple of actives when he's expressing himself. Good thumbs up? Good? Okay, beautiful. And so I watched this video, okay? And it was Josh Everett, King Kong, and so this was the video. So some, some guy, some guy put out a big challenge to the world, specifically the CrossFit world, that this workout couldn't get done in under four minutes. And there's this guy, Josh Everett, okay? Look, this is the, the date, 10/18/08, this is when this video came out. And Josh Everett's about to do this workout, King Kong, okay? And it was a big challenge workout. And I was like, you know, thinking about getting back in shape and realizing that I was overweight and these guys at the 300 inspired me to start looking at things. And the last thing I wanted to do was just go to the gym and do curls and do all that stuff. I was just was like so bored with the thought of even doing it, really didn't excite me because what I really wanted was a way to express my body more than just how it looked, right? Because these, these guys in that movie 300, they expressed their bodies in such a beautiful, elegant way, they moved and were agile and fluid and it was so beautiful to see. And so it shows this workout, okay? I'm gonna play it all for you guys and I want you to watch this because I, and I, I watched this and after I watched this, I knew that, that it was for me, that this is what I was gonna do and I was gonna become this guy. So go ahead. Yeah.
We can't hear it.
Hey Angie, you need to take your buds out, that happens to me every time I teach. When you have to share a video, take your buds out.
All right. No buds.
And where are you gonna do your hand tempo shots? Okay, the board. And so you've already done a little workout?
Yeah, I did a little workout and I snatched 255 and clean and jerk 335. So that's my warm-up.
Are you, are you feeling warm?
I'm feeling warm.
Okay, good. Can you, can you lock out or is that not possible, your shoulders? On the, this?
I'll do the best I can, I get fairly close, okay.
All right, good. Finish your left hand, we'll start.
231, 47. 235. I've got, I've got 455. That was the, that was the video and I watched that. I couldn't tell you how many times I watched that, I knew his time split, but when I watched that, it was like a light bulb went off in my head is, to me, after my motorcycle accident, what I wound up finding out much later in life, but at the time is, I didn't feel free in my body to express my body and I imagined as a 300-pound overweight guy with this accident and these screws and these pins and this limp that I still had, that this was gonna be the, when I was able to do that, I was the, I did it. I came back and I was not only fit like that guy, yeah, I, I could express my body, that's how I wanted to express my body. I wanted to pick up heavy things and go on the rings. And those of you that see CrossFit now, that's very prehistoric, his movement and everything, it doesn't look like as perfect as it was, but 12 years ago, that was the, you know, he was the premier guy in CrossFit. And so I watched that and I was like, man, all right, here we go. And so I would just spend my hours figuring out how to, you know, everything that was, how to start doing this CrossFit training. I spent the rest of 2008 studying and staying up and learning about nutrition and what are these CrossFit workouts and more and more in-depth and, you know, I'm the kind of guy, like I said, I like to really go deep and research things. And so January 5th, 2009 was my first workout, I was a resolution or I am a 2009 resolution that went really, really well, you know what I'm saying? It's a, it's a, not just a regular resolution. And so I started doing CrossFit that first day, there was a bunch of fitness tests that I, like a baseline test and the ending of it had me doing one minute of burpees. And I did three burpees in one, I did three burpees in one minute. And I was so out of shape, that's all I could do at the end of this workout was three burpees in one minute, okay? And so by all standards, those of you can only imagine, that's one every 20 seconds, that was my, that's where I was. And I did this workout at the Civic Center in Melrose Park, at the time I was living on 23rd and Haven. Those of you that are familiar with it, it'll probably be down the distance, but it's about a four, four-block walk. And I cried somber the entire walk home, I felt really bad, you know, like many people when they first start doing something, they don't realize how far out of shape they really, really are. And, and I cried the whole time and, you know, during, during those years, I, even in my previous years, most of the times that I went and wanted to do things in my life or achieve, achieve things in my life were to make other people proud of me. Like I really wanted other people's praise, you know, more than anything, you know, I wanted my father's praise. So that's why I did most of the, I made most of the choices in my life, right? I'm a boy and, you know, you wanna make your daddy proud because when you make your daddy proud, the whole world stops. It's just the way it is. And I, you know, at least the way, I'm sorry, at least the way that was my world because it was such a place of few, place for me. So I, please mute yourself if I didn't do it, thank you so much. Okay. And so I, you know, I, I walked home that day crying and I said, you know, I'm gonna try not to swear too much, but please, if I do, this is coming from the deepest parts of my soul. But I said, F that, I'm doing this for me and I'm gonna make me proud. And so I sold out to doing this, you know, January 5th, 2009, I started doing this CrossFit every day and there was, I, I said no to anything, anything. And Dom was very much around during this time, I said no to anything that did not equal me doing King Kong and looking that way and expressing myself. I would show up to family parties with my own food, I didn't care if you thought it was silly, I didn't care if you thought it was funny because I'm doing this for me because this is what inspires me. And it just helped me with a whole nother level of conviction about myself and I really, what I believe is the, the reason, after losing this weight, I knew that I could do anything I wanted the rest of my life as long as it inspired me because nothing could stop me. I felt more powerful than anything. And so I, this was me, this was me summer of 2008 and this was me summer 2009. And this is me standing on a reef in Lake Geneva on Fontana. Those of you that are from this area, you're either a new Buffalo person or a Lake Geneva person, I grew up a Lake Geneva person and this was 4th of July weekend a year later. And I did it. I fucking did it. And I was so proud of myself, I mean, I was so enjoyable, even look at me out selling pizza outside that truck, I was super excited to even sell pizza because I knew that I, I did it, you know, I was super excited, I felt like a new man, this was a new life for me, you know? I, I didn't wear this suit early in my life, I didn't have abs early in my life, I was the fat guy at the pool and the only way I was getting the guy or girl is because I had a lot of charisma and I made people laugh, you know? And for now, and then I show up and I could do all those things, you know, that Josh Everett wanted to do and all that stuff and it was all a part of me and it was who I became. And along this journey, many people got to see me do it, you know, I was doing both that outside and, and really showcasing that and I was super proud and people wanted to work out with me because they were very inspired. And so I would work out with people and do it for free, train them, anything like that during those months leading up to that and everything. And then right around that summertime, end of May, early June, I started thinking about like, wow, why couldn't this be what I do for a living? Why can't I just make money sharing this with people? Because this is what really inspired me, I was this overweight dude and I completely changed my life and I know how to do it from a place where most people are starting, right? Because if, you know, to me, most of the people that you see or I saw that were trainers or anything like that, they were the jocks, they were the people that were awesome, you know, at their sport, they, they, what do you mean be fat? You know, they, you know, they don't know what it's like to go try clothes on and just walk in the store and go, do we really have to do this right now? Like, you know what I mean? Or, you know, the, the dreadful fact that I was, you know, in my twenties already shopping at, it's so polite, they call it casual mail, but it was big and tall, it was the, the big person store, you guys know what I'm saying? And so I, you know, I was, started training people and I remember, you know, training people outside and I was like, man, why can't this be my career? Why can't I do this, you know, the rest of my life? You know, what, what's stopping? And one of the things that I really enjoyed the most was, was a celebration. was a celebration, I would say, of my losing weight, was to go and run by North Avenue Beach with my shirt off. It was like, what I imagine is uh, if you guys, you know, have seen any Rocky movies, like when he's running up the steps, that type of glory moment. And so for me to drive, I would, I would just be hanging out and I would drive down North Avenue and I'd park my car by North Avenue Beach or North and Wells. And I would run North Avenue to Navy Pier and then back. And it was my, one of my favorite views of the city, um, cause you get to see like all Navy Pier and stuff like that. If you do it at night in the summer, it's really nice. And you know, but just more importantly, being able to rip my shirt off, have just, you know, an iPod on and run and not have any, and not imagine that people were looking at me funny or making fun of me or, or saying, hey, look at that guy's tits, you know? All the things that, you know, overweight, that guy's deal with, you know? On some level, I felt so, I felt so happy. So I was running like that all the time, right? So two things happened. I was lost weight and this idea of being a trainer. I was like, man, let me do this. And so I said, screw it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go be a trainer. So I walk into the export uh, on North and Wells. And I said, hey, my name is Angelo Sisco. I don't have an appointment, but I would love to speak to the manager about working here. And I sat him down and I said, hey, my name is Angelo. And I went over the last seven months of my life. And I explained to this man what I did up to then. And I said, I have no personal training certifications, but this is what I wanna do. Cause this is how I thought you became a trainer, right? Like the, the idea of opening a CrossFit gym really wasn't there yet. And so I get hired that day. They hire me. They love me. They're about it. They'll be like, listen, they will hire you. We'll get you the certifications as we go along your end. We could tell we love you. First thing they do is they give me a shirt that was much tighter than I was comfortable wearing. And they gave me a name tag, okay? Needless to say, I made it two days before I quit, okay? I wasn't into selling people a bunch of protein supplements. I thought if you walked up to somebody when you were running on a treadmill, when they were doing their work on and running on a treadmill, that they should spit on you for interrupting your workout. But needless, they wanted me to walk up to people and ask them about a personal training session. I couldn't do it. Couldn't do it. Like made, I was so uncomfortable. I would walk in there every day with like the pit sweats for those two long days. And I just knew that this is not how I felt about this and expressed it, because I wanted people to feel free and not bogged down and cumbersome by this. Because for me, this gave me that lease on life that I could do anything and be anything. And so I walked up to the guy, turned in my name tag and I bounced. I picked up my phone and I said, uh, I picked up my phone and I texted everyone I knew. And I said, hey, I'm gonna start training people outside. I was good to, it's all one-on-ones. There wasn't the idea of doing classes or anything like that yet. And I said, I'm gonna do three sessions for fifty dollars. So I was valuing my beautiful self at around sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents an hour. I guess I would have been a fantastic, you know what I mean? Just like to think about that, that's what I was doing. Anyways, I was already selling pizza at that time. That was rocking and rolling. We had fun doing that. I wasn't too worried about making money. I just thought if I was making any money, it would mean that I was actually a real trainer. And so I did it, you know, I, I started, I got, I said, oh man, I'm gonna get ten people this first month of uh, Ju- July, or yeah, this first month of July and it's gonna be absolutely amazing. And so uh, I was like, oh man, what am I gonna train people with now? I need equipment and stuff. And so I bought this medicine ball. And so this medicine ball is in a, a plaque in the office. And I bought it and uh, I, this was the first piece of equipment. This medicine ball was sixty dollars, everyone. And at that time, I thought that was a lot of money for equipment. I, that was like me really investing in the business, whole sixty bucks. But you guys gotta understand, that was a little over three hours of work for me. I, I really had to work hard to get that sixty bucks according to me. And so that medicine ball is still here. And those of you that are members, does anyone remember like when you go by the kettlebells, the thirty-fives? There's that like weird green one that doesn't belong there? Yeah, raise your hand if you know what you're talking about. That's the other piece of equipment I bought. So here I go. I got some rubber bands that you can get at Fitness Factory in Forest Park. I have my green kettlebell, my red medicine ball. And I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna go train people. And I continued this unbelievable, uh, even when I first started this researching and developing. And I would spend uh, most of my days writing workouts on index cards for everybody. So if I knew that I was good to see Amp or Joe, I would have everything ready on index cards and they would meet me at the park or I would drive to their house or whatever. And we would start training and I would take them through workouts and everything like that. And it was so much fun. It was the, it was the infancy of all doing this. And I had no idea what I was doing. Um, I just knew that I really loved this and I had, I, I take that back. I probably had a decent fundamental understanding of this, but as you guys can only imagine, especially those of you that know me from the early years. If you think I didn't have any tech then, could you only imagine the stuff I was saying to people in two thousand and nine? Uh, it was even worse. Uh, and so anyways, I started training people, started developing a training little business. It's amazing. I'm having so much fun. Um, I'm training people in the morning. I'm working out. I'm in great shape. Making a little bit of money. Life is good. And so I uh, then it started getting cold, right? And I was like, man, what am I gonna do? What can I possibly do to, to keep this going? And so I start renting a space uh, in the Civic Center in Melrose Park. And I rented a racquetball court space as well as train people in the gym when people weren't really busy. And I did that from September of two thousand and nine. And then right around the next year, I started, I was beginning to, to feel a bit uh, frustrated with, with the, the setting I was in. Because I didn't like someone telling me what time I could open, what time I could close. You know, what time I um, to get the, you know, to, to, oh, they're, it's, they're voting today. You can't go train people. I was like, who cares, you know? All I wanted to do was train people. And so I, I was like, I gotta start looking for another space. I have to start looking for another space. And so I just started researching CrossFit gyms around the country and like, what do these other like garage gyms look like? And I, and then I go to, you know, my trusted Craigslist and start looking up locations and possible places that we could even go and open up the gym. And I, I see a image of next door, which was ninety-one hundred B, okay? And I see these two garage doors um, that were available. They had two garage doors right here on Belt and I was like, oh my God. Does this get any cooler than that? And then I drove down there and I was like, this is so amazing. This is the spot. This is what, this is where we're gonna go and this is what we're gonna do, okay? And so uh, I uh, I was like, oh, I'm gonna open up the gym and it's gonna be absolutely amazing. And this is gonna be the location that we do it, okay? I think I had uh, five thousand dollars saved to open up this gym, okay? And over time, over that twelve to fourteen month period, as I was growing in my training business, I was gathering up equipment, getting more stuff and outfitting that little racquetball court space and growing and doing all this kind of stuff. And it was great, you know, I was really gathering stuff, getting ready for my move. And then I go, it's time to uh, get everything ready to talk to this landlord about moving in to, to the space. And you have to fill out this like application. And it's, they go, um, put your bank account. And I didn't have a bank account. I didn't even have a credit card. I took everything cash at that time. So, you know, my sister is the most, more responsible one in my family, right? You know, there's usually, if you're, if you're one of two, you got one recluse and you got one responsible. Since my sister took responsible, I had no choice. I took recluse. I took the rebel. So anyways, I call up my sister. I says, hey, listen, I'm opening the gym. She's like, what? I'm like, listen, that's not what I'm here to talk to you about. I need to put, us go to the bank. I need to go put my names on your account because these guys are gonna check it out. Don't worry. Don't need any money from you. I have it all in my nightstand in a paper bag. In a brick of twenties. We're good, okay? And she's like, yeah, okay. So we go to the bank and I um, and I put my name on her other checking accounts. And I have that five thousand, okay? And uh, like I said, it was a brick of twenties. I didn't even have big bills. I really looked like a drunk. And so I uh, I go to the bank, uh, and then I'm driving. So I have my name on the accounts. And I go and it's, damn, I'm gonna sign the lease for this place. I'm super excited and we're gonna do this and then I'm gonna open up. And this was like also too, those of you that remember this time in late two thousand and nine, this was like right after the economic crash. This was like not also everyone's favorite time to open up a business and think that you were actually gonna be something. Yet for me, I just thought, I'm gonna make this great. No problem. And so the, the realer calls me up. She's like, hi Angelo, it's uh, what was her name? I think her name was Caroline. She says, I want you to know that we called up the bank and you do not have, we see you do not have the funds for first and last month. I think it was probably twenty-eight hundred bucks. I said, well Caroline, good lucky for you. I have it in a paper sack next to me. I'll see you in ten minutes. And I hung up the phone. And I walk in this room with a brown lunch bag, brick of twenties, you know, counted off in like hundreds and then thousands, right? I knew what it was. And I get to meet my landlord. Those of you that may know this beautiful man, John Corozon is on this call. He knows this man very much. Uh, his name is Harry Patel. And he still has not been able to call me Angelo from day one. He still calls me Angel. Like he doesn't know my name yet after a decade of paying this man's rent. So I walk in there and it's this dingy undone warehouse, right? Looks like complete crap. And meanwhile, I see O'Hare CrossFit, right? See, I see this gym. And so there was nothing in there. And so I counted out twenty-eight hundred dollars in twenty dollar bills and stacks of a hundred across the floor. Like twenty-eight little piles. And I said, I promise you one thing, Harry, I am not a drug dealer. I do nothing illegal. And then he goes, hey Angel, no problem. And I signed the lease and it's, there you go, okay? And so I signed the lease in October. And so I have about a little over two grand left. And I go, great, this is what I'm gonna use to paint the gym and get flooring. It's gonna be absolutely amazing. No business plan, no understanding of anything like that, no understanding of business licenses, all this stuff. Those of you may have heard me speak about him, um, uh, if not, I'm gonna reintroduce him. I have a very, 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 my brother, my, my number one friend, his name is Dom Didiana. And uh, he uh, he had a very interesting day. So I signed this lease and now I'm still, actually, I go, oh my God, I haven't researched where to get flooring. I have to get ready to start opening up. I didn't even have a real opening date. I just thought I was gonna sign the lease. I had a few months free. We were gonna figure things out. I was like, if I open in November, it'll be perfect. And then um, and then I found out the Civic Center was gonna be closed on Veterans Day, November eleventh. So I go, that's gonna be the day we open, cause I'm not gonna be closed that day because it's just Veterans Day. Nothing against the Veterans. I honor and love you, yet I wanted to train people. And so Dom calls me up uh, right around towards the end of October. And he's like, hey, listen, I got this problem. And he's like, my best friend. I'm like, hey dude, it's your problem. It's my problem. What's going on? And someone's mother called him up. And my buddy Dom is a beautiful man, soft heart. And I hope you guys get his number or at least see him on the Zoom. You could, if you got a sob story, he'll give you whatever you need, okay? I'll tell you that right now. Just give him a good sob story. His mother calls, this guy's mother calls him up and says, so-and-so's in jail. And we don't have any money for bail. And I forgot how much it was. I think she was asking Dom to borrow like three thousand dollars, okay? And he's like, Ange, what should I do? And I said, I don't know. Let's give her, give her the money and I'll go half with you. Cause if you're gonna lose, you're my best friend and you're more important than anything else in the world. And uh, I gave him fifteen hundred of the two thousand dollars and I was like, screw it. I, I trust that you support your friends. You're gonna figure this out. And so I gave Dom the money. We bailed out the guy. And just in case you were wondering, uh, apparently he was on the eight-year payment plan. I think he finally finished paying this in uh, twenty seventeen after I told him it's enough enough. Get this crap in, okay? It's long overdue. If I charged you dues, you would have bought me a house by now. You know what I'm saying? Anyways, so I give him the money. I got like five hundred bucks to figure out how I'm even gonna put this gym together. Scouring Craigslist day and night now, really hoping something pans out. And I look on Craigslist and this guy's selling a bunch of equipment on like Sixteenth and Ashland uh, near uh, Comiskey Park or US Cellular, like over there by those warehouses. And uh, I said, hey, listen, I'm not too interested in your equipment, but I see that you have some flooring there. Are you willing to sell that? And he said, no. And I said, crap, we're really in trouble. Because flooring, if you guys look that up, it's about a hundred dollars a mat. Maybe a, a little bit, maybe seventy a mat, okay? Now I had about sixteen hundred square feet of training space. And so I needed about sixteen to twenty mats. And I had five hundred bucks. So I didn't even really have enough money to buy the mats, paint, all this stuff. So anyways, uh, I said, well, listen, if you have a change of heart, I'll come and take the flooring, okay? We definitely could use the flooring. Sure enough, a week later, this guy calls me up and he said, uh, hey, you could come take this flooring. And I said, okay, great. How much? And he said something like three hundred dollars and I think I have about a thousand square feet. And I go, dang, it's not enough to do the floor, but I'll figure it out. I'll make this work. Next thing I do, like I said, you got any sob story, any guilt trip, you could ride this guy into the ground. I call up Dom. I say, hey man, pick me up. We need your dad's truck. And we're going to this place. I don't even know where we're going. We have to be careful, but we're gonna go get some flooring. And we walk up to the second floor of this no man's land scary movie warehouse. To me, it's a scary warehouse when there's no railing by the stairs. You know, it's like not regulated, like what is going on? I can't even hold myself if I wanted to. We walk up to this guy's warehouse and he get a complete like outfitted gym uh, with machines and all this stuff. And he goes, you could take as much flooring as you could carry, like as you could fit in your car. Meanwhile, I've been doing the flooring scouring game. It was about twenty-five hundred square feet of flooring that we were gonna get for three hundred dollars. So the first thing I do is I grab Dom, I pull him in the hallway. I cover my mouth like this guy's an FBI agent, cause I don't want him to know that he's got way more flooring than he thinks. I just need Dom and me to shut the F up and put this on our arms and get this in this truck as fast as we possibly can, because there's no other way for me to pull this off. So I tell Tom, I go, don't say a word. Do this. Now we're walking out carrying two flights down of flooring. And it was like, it's the square rubber flooring that's in the other room. And we had marks for days trying to carry this all over our face. I mean, just complete grunginess, but I had the flooring, okay? So the flooring was checked. Everything was renewed. We were, we were gonna open, right? It wasn't gonna be the most prettiest. We were gonna open. November, I, I, I spent most of the time I was either training people or getting things ready. My sister's so beautiful. She helped me paint the bathrooms and get that looking normal or as normal as you could make a bathroom in these warehouses look. And get that looking normal or as normal as you could make a bathroom in these warehouses look. And uh, I was laying out the floor all by myself and getting everything ready. And then November tenth, uh, that night, it was a Wednesday. I grabbed all of my equipment. Plus I borrowed some uh, things from the Civic Center that they still haven't gotten back today. And uh, I packed up a truck and we uh, we opened uh, O'Hare Cross at the early years. And so this is what the gym first looked like. That's me working with someone. And uh, this was the first image. This was the, the premiere. This was the gym. This is what it looked like. This was the, the beautiful flooring. I had a little walkway. We had some kettlebells. As you can see, I don't know what you would call this, an eggshell mixed with ash paint. Uh, very, very nice, uh, very good. Uh, all this crap everywhere, but this was the first, this was the first day. This is what it would look like in opening day of November two thousand and eleven. And so it was beautiful. We were training people. We were having a great time. Everything was great. I was off and running. We were doing our thing. And then there was a knock at the door one day. And I was like, well, who the hell is this? I wasn't expecting anyone. And it was the inspector from the village of Franklin Park. Needless to say, I did not know that you had to get a business license to do business. I thought if you paid rent and you were good with the landlord and you had ComEd and Night Court, you were good with God and you had business. I had no clue that this was everything going down. I really didn't. I was just here. I was training people. I was like, this is it. We're starting to do this. Okay? And what winds up happening is, is they are telling me that I have to shut down. And guys, I already told the Civic Center, you know, say la vie, moving on. I, I'm going to open my big gym and I'm gonna be the CrossFit guy. And I wish you guys the best. Thank you for all you could do. Now the village came in and said, hey man, you're in trouble. You're shut down. This was in early November. Okay? They came in, they put the orange stickers on the door. And I go, forget these guys. I'm, I'm gonna stay open. And so when people would come in for the sessions, I'd go, shh, shh, shh. I'd bring them in and we'd lock the door. And I, I would lock the door behind them. And, and we would have the music on, but not too loud. No one matter what, we didn't answer the door. Then Chris, around Christmas time of that year, my first angel of O'Hare CrossFit walks in. His name is John Carosa. And he walks in my gym, this guy. I'm gonna show you this guy. He walks in this gym. This is John Carosa. This is his wife, Mary Ann. They're still beautiful members of the gym today. This is John and Mary Ann. This is Rocco, his brother and his wife. It's very important that you guys see Rocco, cause this is first and foremost. This is Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve workout two thousand and eleven, I believe. And I'm kind of under, I'm kinda shut down. I'm not really fully legit yet, but we're here and people are here. And so this guy walks in and he's from California. He lives in California. So he understands what CrossFit is. He understands the deal and everything like that. And I'm like, great, come on in. We'll have a great time. And he brings in this guy. And uh, this man's wearing jeans. This guy is wearing jeans to do a workout on Christmas. And they walk in three minutes before class and there's probably twenty people there to do like this Christmas Eve thing. And I said, I said to this guy, I said, are you gonna work out here in these dungarees? This is your plan? You got something to change into, buddy? Get this waiver signed. Let's go. Like first of all, if I was John, I would have just walked out. Okay? John's this beautiful man. He's a lawyer. I don't even know him. He's a professional. And there's me just like berating him for his dungarees. Okay? And I thought dungarees was hysterical. If you guys have ever looked at a brand uh, called Lee, Lee Jeans, it said like, it would always say Lee dungarees. It was the funny, I thought it was the funniest thing. And so John walks in and he, and he does this workout and we wind up talking after. And John, honestly, guys, is the first angel of O'Hare CrossFit because John then wound up hearing about everything that I was going through legally. And with now, we actually had a lawyer. Okay? We were lawyered up. And we were ready to face Franklin Park's thing. Because it wasn't enough that I didn't fill out the business license. The area was not zoned for a gym. So we had to go in front of these, uh, the hearing and convince these bozos that this wasn't LA Fitness. Okay? My landlord didn't care, didn't even show up to one of the hearings. We begged this guy, can you give us some support? Angel, I can't make it. Jesus, what do I supposed to do? I just wanna be legitimate, you know, especially too, my dad did everything illegitimate in his life. I was like, God, this is this is something I wanna do nice and straight. And we're trying to figure this out. And John Carosa, this beautiful angel of O'Hare CrossFit figures this out. And I don't know what this man even saw in me to help me. And I'm so grateful. That's why I say he's the first angel of all this because without him, uh, the, I have no idea what I would have done. I don't, I have no clue. This is uh, we would have never been approved for a business license. Okay? I don't even know the, the steps this man had to take to do all this. I really don't know. We would show up to the hearings, armpits wet from here to here for me the whole time. I had no clue what to say. I'm just trying to get these people to understand that what I'm doing, it doesn't look like the ballys. Okay? John gets us approved. We wind up going out to a great dinner. We wind up becoming really great friends. And we just connected deeper and deeper there. And John, over the years, has just been uh, an amazing guide and friend and uh, loyal friend and loving, loving man. Uh, even deeper level, he knows how to party. This was him on Halloween dressed up as Richard Simmons sweating to the oldies. I mean, just a beautiful soul. Every way that you could imagine someone being. And so I know you're on this call. Thank you so much for being my brother and loving me. And seeing the greatness in me even before I really understood it. And so now we were too legit to quit. But we still weren't O'Hare CrossFit yet. We still weren't an official affiliate. Why? Because I loaned out that dang money to Nello. So we could bail out. We could bail out Nello. I loaned it to Dom. So we could bail out Nello because his mom gave Nello the guilt or Dom the guilt trip. And this is my life. This is the first year of O'Hare CrossFit. Okay guys? And so and meanwhile, I'm trying to build a business and build a reputation and do all this stuff. Okay? And so we're, we're, we're doing our thing and we're growing. Okay? And so I really, uh, we're, we're making things happen. And this is when I start transitioning to classes because at first it was like, there was one class in the evening and then I did a bunch of one on ones. And then I just started getting so busy that the idea of doing classes very naturally happened because people wanted to be there certain times and I didn't have those times available. But now we were legit and it was really great. And also too, I, I still had that aspiring dream or aspiring desire to get good at the uh, competitive side of CrossFit. I still wanted to be Josh Everett. So I'm building this brand and business and doing this. Along this time, Mike Olson, God bless him. He's amazing. And I, I, I don't know if I have any images of him, but Mike Olson uh, was around in these early years. And he was someone that I felt was responsible enough for me to go and take certifications. And I would program workouts only like Cindy, things that, you know, you gotta be really crazy to hurt yourself doing. Like I gave Mike Olson, I'm like, listen, be downtown, anything. And so he, he's doing that. I'm getting more and more education, all this kinda stuff. I'm trying to progress as a coach, trying to progress as a competitor in CrossFit. I'm trying to learn all these things. And I come up with the name O'Hare CrossFit because I didn't want my gym, uh, at first we were like the chamber. And then I realized, I'm like, what am I doing? Naming this place like the chamber? Like who am I really gonna attract with naming your gym the chamber? You know, my, is this a smart idea? And so you know, we knew we had to let it go and move on to O'Hare CrossFit. During also this time, I wanted to look for more mentorship and learning. So I found a coach. His name was Jason Lyden. He was in Connecticut. He is in Connecticut, Milford. Now at the time, with the gym was getting going, Mike Olson a little bit, but I didn't have much money. You know, I had a few, few hundred bucks extra bucks, the bucks at the end of the month to, to live on and do everything. But I really wanted to seek this knowledge from Jason Lyden. And so one day in uh, early October of two thousand and twelve, I Facebook messaged this guy and I said, hey dude, do you do online programming for people out of your state? I'm in Chicago. And he's like, yeah, I can't wait to hear from you. Email me, Jason, CrossFit Milford. And I said, awesome. Because at the time, Jason was like one of the only real coaches that was famous in CrossFit. There was like three. And Jason coached with a guy named Rob Orlando, who I really liked as a competitor, but also physically identified with. He was a very big, strong man. And he wanted to breathe and move his body better and better. And so I, I wind up going to Milford and I didn't have any money uh, really to do that. And so my first early trips to Milford, I would fly to New York. Um, I would fly to LaGuardia. I would get a rental car. Obviously, you know, I had a very small budget, so I'm getting the compact rental car. And I'm winding up uh, going, driving from LaGuardia to Milford. And what I used to do is I used to sleep in the back of a Jetta. And that I, I didn't have a hotel room or any of those things. And I was super excited to be there and super excited to sleep in these dungeon. What I found out later with Dungy crackhead forty dollar a night motels and back of the car every time we made a trip. And then I knew that I was gonna really learn a lot. And so I show up at CrossFit Milford. And this is what like, one of the pictures of what it looked like. And this was at the time, CrossFit Milford to me was like the Mecca of what I was trying to create. Basically in my brain, after I visited this, this was like my epiphany moment after I watched King Kong. So I watched Josh Everett do King Kong and I said, ooh, that's how I want my body to look and be. And then I went to CrossFit Milford and his gym was gigantic. I think at the time, Jason already had like three hundred members and this, he had all these classes and all this stuff. And I would go there hours early before, like he wanted me to meet him at like seven thirty, eight AM. And obviously he didn't know that I was sleeping in the car, which was completely uncomfortable. My neck was already contorted. So I would show up at five in the morning and I would just watch his classes. I would watch his coaches, coaches classes. I would watch how it was all done. How people lined up, how he programmed his warmups, how he did everything. And I would just sit in the corner and take notes and he'd be like, oh, you, yeah, oh, you're here already? Yeah. I'm like, yeah, I just got here, you know? And meanwhile, I was there. He's like, yeah, how'd you sleep? Yeah, slept great. You know, really great. They would, because also too, I didn't even know where to park where I would sleep. You know, like you'd pull in a motel and you go and sleep. And then they think you're there to do drugs or solicit prostitution, even if you're just there to sleep. And they bang on your window and you'd have to go find a new parking spot in the middle of the night. And that's what I did, you know, but I didn't care. I didn't, didn't think it was sacrifice. I thought it was the cost of what I was gonna have to do to really make this great because I knew that I was gonna be the best at doing this. Uh, here's another, here's another picture of Milford. And it was this, this awesome, look at all these pull-up bars and this big floor space and CFM on the wall. These rings were everywhere and everyone had room to play. I was like, oh my goodness, this was super cool. I'm gonna go make this. And so uh, after we talked about my training and then got that all going, um, he just schooled me on everything that he was doing. And then Jason has been a mentor and we've traveled around the world together. I'll get deeper into that later on. And we formed incredible bond and friendship that is still today. He was uh, he was actually the person that married Rosio and I in two thousand and seventeen in Africa. And so I wanted to get better at the competitive side. I wanted to be a better coach. I wanted to be a better business owner and Jason schooled me on everything. At that time, I was still taking cash for everything. And I was like, well, how do you do all this stuff? And he's like, oh, there's this program called Mind Body. You get it. People charge automatically. I was like, what? He's like, yeah, it just goes right into your bank account. I go, bank account? Oh crap. I gotta get one of those. And like, all those things, you know, I, I didn't know contracts? Yeah, dude, I'll send you. And so he sent me everything. And then fast forward, uh, fast forward some months. This is more, you know, we actually got some paint on the gym and started looking more and more like Milford, you know, like it had a color. People were working out. There was nice lines. It was actually starting to look more and more like, like a gym. And more and more people started showing up and everything like that. It was amazing. And it was also the time when CrossFit started getting popular, right? And this is, this is what people would know as the old gym. But if you really look at it, all I was doing was trying to make my version of this gym and this gym. That's all I really did is I would see something and then I would just do it. I would just go, okay, that's what I'm trying to make. And I would put my head down and I would go make it. Around this time, uh, two thousand and twelve-ish, I get a call one day or a message one day from a guy named Nick uh, Chosen something. I couldn't even pronounce his name, but his last name was Chosen Kowski. Those of you may know Nick is uh, he's back as a husband, but at the time it was Nick Chosen Kowski. And he had a girlfriend. I don't even think they were engaged at the time, named Becca Claire. They were working out at the gym up north and they were not good standing with the owner for whatever reason, because they wanted to focus on certain things, whatever heavy. And he called me up. And I said, yeah, man, why don't you come in here and you could jam with us and we'll see how things are going. I'm getting much better at coaching the competitive side and everything like that. And now those two walked in and Becca joining O'Hare CrossFit was a very pivotal moment for me from many levels. And uh, this was also at the time that gym was growing. You know, this is when CrossFit became popular. And obviously for me, I thought I was the, the business guru because I picked O'Hare CrossFit, Google searches, you know, I thought I was the man. Not letting everyone know that John Carosa had to bail me out, take uh, orange signs off the door about a year ago, right? I just was so silly. But anyways, the gym's growing. Boom, Becca joins the gym, this competitive side. This is just rocking, really, really good time. This is right around the time Rosio's joining the gym. What year did you join the gym? Twenty thirteen. This is right around those years, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I'm figuring it out. The competitive side, I'm growing in myself. The gym is growing. People really wanted to be competitive in CrossFit at that time when they do it. It was more competition based to even do it. Still undergroundish, but very, very going mainstream. More and more people were showing up for class. I still remember calling Dom that day, those days and going, man, I had ten people show up for classes today. Or man, and then my first day was like, the first time I had a double digit class, I think we went out and celebrated. That's how excited I was to get ten people to show up to one class. I thought, oh my goodness, we're, we're rich. This is it. I did it. I, I made it. I, I fulfilled it. Okay? And so I, all these people are showing up, we're growing. It's absolutely, absolutely amazing. And so Becca is working at Allstate at the time. She's competing. She's working really hard to compete. And I started growing and she was interning for me. And uh, she started coaching part-time. She hated her job. And she was really good at Excel spreadsheets. And I I don't even know how to create a formula to this day. I have a friend, I think he's still, I hope my brother Mark. I have a friend, I think he's still, I hope my brother Marcus, he's on this call. My friend Marcus is on this call, guys, uh, he knows how to create Excel spreadsheets for me now. I don't know how to do any of those things. Sum E equals nine plus two, I, but Becca did. And I was like, we're making money, we're too legit to quit. I just don't know what to do now because we're growing and all this stuff. So I said, Becca, why don't you come on here and work with me? You could train all the time. And I said, how much are you getting paid at Allstate? She told me and I said, I'll just match it, come work with me. And Becca quit her job. And this was right around the same time that where we are now is, was a welding shop. Stan's welding, good old Stan, Stan the Man. We had one thing in common, Stan the Man and I, we both hated our landlord, Harry Patel. So we would, we would commiserate on that. And so this is what the gym, this is a, a view of the gym before we moved into this space that you guys see. This is the garage door. Those of you that could imagine running in from the garage door. This is, this is where the wall is and the clock. This is where that spare room, this is what the gym originally looked like. So you guys could only imagine how much vision I had if I thought this was where we're gonna be. This is the bathroom still. This is where the rig is. This is where you guys all walk in and out for class, right? You guys ever wonder what was behind that box that we have over there by the boards and bands and all that stuff? There's there, there was a big sewer here in the middle. We dug this up and, uh, we, we, we laid rock and then concrete. Uh, those of you that were wondering, no, we never got a business license to do any of this work. We just did it on the weekends, okay? We, we did, we went legit some ways, but we have a, we have a, we have to stay true to our roots and everything. And so we, we were moving into this new location. I hired Becca, Allsteam ahead. And we're, I'm, I'm becoming this, this CrossFit, this CrossFit coach or what, you know, guru, whatever you wanna call it. This was the last shots of the old gym before we left. It was dangerous. People were on top of each other. I had to have people out in the street. We, we, we would have to move equipment outside to even fit everything. And then people were doing pull-ups on top of each other. It was mayhem in the old gym. And I, you know, and so it was time for us to move in there. You let, yet again, guess what happened, guys? I tried to move into the next door space and they made me go through a whole nother zoning thing. So I decked out this entire new space, okay, guys? I'm gonna share my screen. So this is what the gym looked like as soon as we were done. We had the, the platforms, the rig, right? This is what it looked like. I was so proud, I was so excited. It was painted, we were ready to open. I open up, knock, knock, knock. The, the original guy was gone, who I knew and made friends with. There was this new young guy, uh, and he tells me, hey, you're illegal to be on this side. And it was the same building, but it was illegal to be on this side. So of course, what we do is we operate as incognito as we can. But this guy's now, he's doing drive-bys, he's on to us, okay? We, we got in trouble. And yet again, John Carosa puts on his cape, shows up to the hearings and we're back in the game, okay? So it was a, it was a weird moment, we got in there. And this is when the gym was really growing. This was a really, really beautiful time. Some of you, uh, may remember that. Some of you may remember this, uh, the New Orleans Saints came here in twenty fourteen. And this is the, the coaching staff. This is, uh, this is Sean Payton, the strength coaches. This is Dick Marably, who's coaching us. This is Mike Olson, this is Becca. I got a call that the New Orleans Saints were in town a day early. And they wanted, they wanted us to, to do a class for them. And I, at first I thought it was a prank. The guy's like, no, we're for real, we wanna come and do a class. And there's the coaches. And then I hit it off with Sean Payton. He gave us, oop, he gave us a lovely tweet, this man. I just spoke with Sean a couple months ago, maybe. Uh, he had coronavirus. And so I reached out to him and, uh, made sure that he was okay. And, and we, we, we hit it off and we're really great. And so we had a lot of popularity, a lot of fun, so much so that the New Orleans Saints invited me to go and visit their training camp the next year. And so I got to spend a week hanging out with Sean Payton in New Orleans. And so this was the sort of the birth of what I would say is, you know, Michelle from McGully. She, she wound up becoming a female individual games athlete. And so this was the, uh, oh, by the way, some of you may remember this shirt, those of you that were around. It said, O'Hare CrossFit versus everybody, right? Like, we were ready, I was, I was ready to tell the whole entire CrossFit universe, uh, where, where they, where they could go. And it was great times for us. We were growing, we were really booming. And it was an incredible time. And I started doing more remote coaching and all that stuff. And I had a mentality at that time, bigger location equals more members, which was really important. And the mentality was that bigger is better and more is better, right? And so many of us may also share in that mentality or have shared. And so I kept thinking about growing and all that. And also around that time of twenty fifteen, the whole world was experiencing this shift in group-based fitness. This was the very beginning of all those things. And so I didn't realize that I was just super lucky that I was before this bubble. And then also too, that my growth came also, you know, obviously from my great coaching, but all in part two, because this phenomenon was happening. And so around two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, we were growing, we were doing all these things. But inside, I, um, I wasn't really happy. I wasn't, I wasn't really like rejoicing. I wasn't at a place where I would honestly go, yes, this is fabulous. You know, I was, I just wanted more and, and thinking that way, I didn't enjoy things. And I looked at every pla, everything in my life from that mentality of it had to be more and get more and do more. What's the next thing? What's this? And then being mean to people and doing all this, I just didn't understand life. I didn't understand myself, right? I, I lost a hundred pounds and then I just thought everything was about me, taking what I wanted, whatever I wanted. I had a, that blood over in many areas of my life, guys, many areas that I still, uh, you know, I'm very sorry for the choices that I made and do, have done my best to rectify them as best as I possibly can. We'll put it that way. And so along that time in twenty fifteen, that twenty fifteen was the first year that we didn't have this like, act, like exponential, or twenty fourteen. I didn't have this crazy exponential growth. I remember I grew like eighty-three percent one year, two hundred and seventy-five percent another year. And so I think I'm just Johnny badass and my business is supposed to grow at this rate. Come to find out, if your business grows like ten percent a year, you should be throwing a party, right? And I thought I should outdo everything because I'm Angelo Sisso. Pardon me, still kinda does, in a weird way, yet I also realized that it's okay to keep. And so I started down a path of what I would like to call is really victimhood. Because I wasn't growing as fast. I was blaming other people, I was blaming the people that really worked, uh, that worked for me. I wasn't, I was nasty, I really wasn't pleasurable to be around. And it was only about trying to satisfy this insatiable hunger. And so I, uh, I started looking around and going, man, well, how can I, how can I start learning and, and figuring this out? And because I knew that I was a student, I just had to start learning more. And I stumbled upon a book called Emotional Intelligence two point O. Started learning about all these things, about self-awareness and all these kind of things. And so I would, I started reading, I would just look up people's books, what they were reading. And I would do hour-long assault bike or air dine rides every day, reading books. Some of you and I remember this, shout out to Jor Corvo here. Um, if you look at this picture, I'm only in tights. I did it back then too, I didn't believe in wearing pants. And I would just spend hours reading books. This is a book called Never Eat Alone, about how to talk with people, how to talk to yourself and learning all this. This huge thirst I had now was more about mindset stuff and development and growth and really, really doing that. So around two twenty fifteen is when I like to say, uh, began my self-actualization journey. This is when I really started learning, uh, that you weren't your past, that you had options, that you could change your future, how to do that and all those things. And like most things in my life, guys, I experience them to the depth and I jump in all the way. And so in two thousand fifteen, I, uh, there was this mastermind group, very popular mastermind group, presented by a group called Barbell Shrugged. And it was like this thing where the top minds in fitness and across it would get together and you spend four or five days in these really cool mansions in Southern California. And you could learn and talk to each other and they had these presenters. And so one day I was sitting in the barber shop and I was like, man, they wanna take more people for this next group in January. This is to go to the one January twenty sixteen. And I, I subscribed to, I like, I filled out the form, they got back to me that I was in. And this was like, they're like, you're welcome, you're invited to come this one in January. It was like the first time I was ever gonna go to California and travel that way. Cause I really didn't travel that much, uh, most of my life, except to prison. So I was like, oh my God, I get to go to Southern California. It was five thousand dollars to go to this event, five thousand dollars. And I said, you know what? I'm doing it, I'm investing in me, I'm worth it. And I know that you put me in any room, I'm gonna get my return on investment, you can believe it. That's what I convinced myself. And I was so scared to go there. I was like, I'm gonna be the loser CrossFit gym owner there out of all these people that were big in nutrition and fitness and all these CrossFit gyms. And this is where I met my, my other dear friend, Marcus Gersi, who's on this call. Marcus, I love you so much. And I, I met Marcus there, person. And, uh, Marcus and I first hit it off on a phone call to, to get some software for the gym. But then I got to meet this guy in person. And four or five days I hung out with people and I was so inspired. And I also learned that day or that weekend that I did a lot of things really great. And like, the gym was awesome that we were in. And I, I knew that I still had a lot to learn, but I left that mastermind going. I paid this five grand, I know what I need to do now to be better. And I also knew that I was already pretty awesome. Like my gym was great, I wasn't, like, a lot of these guys were coming there, these gym owners, and they were worried about like getting more members or making money. My problem was, is I just wanted to spend all the money and be an animal. Like, I didn't understand those things. And so I was super proud of myself, I was super happy. And I had that like re-renewed confidence, very similar to when I lost that weight before. And I also met some amazing, amazing people that inspired me to be great, to be better, to be amazing business owners. Two of them, um, I, obviously giving Marcus is very important, but Aaron and Orion, the people that make FitAid and LifeAid. I spent hours with, uh, Orion, that first mastermind and just learned from this guy. Talked to him about business and I really never went to business school, right? I saw people doing certain things and all that good stuff. But I didn't really know, you know, I dropped out of college and he really helped me understand things and talk to me. And I was like, man, I wanna be like this guy who's got this amazing beverage company. And so I leave this mastermind, January twenty sixteen, and they invite me to be a member for the year. And the year membership was in total twenty-five thousand dollars, another twenty thousand dollars to be a member of it a year. And I, obviously, I, guys, I didn't even have five thousand in cash. But along the time, I got the bank account, I got some credit. And you give a broke kid an American Express card, cause that's the real thing, guys. The power is in the American Express card because it's a charge card and not a credit card. So if you could pay it off in the end of the month, they'll give you anything you want, okay? They'll give you, they'll give you anything you want, as long as you could swipe it away and know that you're gonna get approved. And so me, I said, I'm in. I'll figure this out, I'll get my money back, return on investment, no problem. And so I, I charged all the money on the card. And we figured it out. And one of the things that really came to me, uh, during that time was, uh, deeper work on myself and more, um, excuse me, I wanted to help other gym owners and beginning business consult, uh, business consulting really came from there. And so twenty sixteen was like a very big time for me that way. And then also there was a guy named Mike Bledsoe, put on these masterminds. And what I love the most about this guy is he really took a liking to me because I would show up to every single activity early, didn't even matter what it was. It was like, show up at six AM for the breathing. And I don't care what time I went to bed or meditation, I was there. I was like, I wanna learn what this stuff is. And so he took a really great liking to me. And one of the things that we did was, is on the next mastermind, he liked me so much that he invited me out three days early, or four days early to the mastermind. And so this is me, that, that trip, four days early, this is that guy, Mike Bledsoe. And he winds up taking me to a party in the middle of nowhere in Southern California, okay? And this is like in the middle of this dark field, okay? And I wind up walking into this complete, everyone's hugging each other. I wind up walking in to this complete, this is Mike and Ashley, they were together at the time. And I show up there and I walk into this, what is basically a complete hippie fest spiritual party, right? I have no idea what's going on, I have no idea what I'm doing here. I'm so freaked out, I don't wanna hug these women with armpit hair. I have no, why doesn't anyone have deodorant? I'm like totally just shell shocked by this culture. Can someone please put a fucking pair of shoes on? Like, I was like completely nervous. Anyways, I get there early and I meet this guy, Daniel Raphael, who they introduced me as, hey Angelo, this is Daniel Raphael and he's a wizard. And I go, oh, okay. And so we sit down and we're talking. And this man is like just talking me through my life. And we're talking about my life on a deep level that I never even thought about. Twenty-four hours later, I'm in this house in Southern California in Encinitas. No one is there, I'm sorry, the, okay. I agree to be with Daniel the next morning and do some work. And I'm in Mike Bledsoe's house, but he leaves. Next thing you know, it's me and Daniel, I'm writing in a journal, setting an intention. And next thing I know, I'm drinking a cup of cacao tea with a bunch of mushrooms. And I drink this whole tea and this mushrooms. And I have a, um, very healing, beautiful mushroom ceremony with me and this guy guiding me through this, all about the relationship with me and my mother. And it was the most amazing, I had a lot of animosity, a lot of anger built up in my, towards my mother. And people are like, why, she's the sweetest lady in the world. Well, for me, guys, when I was a little boy and I had an abusive father, you look for your mother to stick up for you. Cause that's what woman, and, uh, I love her very much. And, uh, she just, but did not have the capacity to, to really be there for me in that way. And so I grew up with a lot of anger, resentment in my heart towards my mother. And I really believe that that is why I also grew in behaviors that didn't look like I really loved women. It carried out deeply in my life. It was a very dark part of my heart. And I was able to really begin working through that deeper during that experience. So I was super grateful for that. And then we had a mastermind that, that, then we wound up having a master, a mastermind with everybody that weekend. And it was like spring And it was like spring boarding me into this new world. This is the, one of the groups of the mastermind, this was us in Cabo. Um, we had a really, really great time, that's Marcus. We did, we drove four wheelers all over, uh, Mexico, uh, in the beach and stuff like that. Just wanted to show you guys a clip of that. And so I just felt, man, I was removing this, this stuff about my mother and doing all this, it was really, really great. And then I just kept, continued with this group and then I met this woman, uh, her name is, uh, Anat, Anat Perry. And she was at the next mastermind. And what she did is she had a retreat where she would go through even deeper into your childhood. And at the time it was called Journey to Love and now it's called Training Camp for the Soul. And around that time, I saw, I was like, man, this, I, I was able to do this with this guy, I'm gonna go here. I hope, you know, if it's more drugs I'm in, I don't care, I was all about it, whatever it took, right? And, uh, this trip didn't, this, this five day retreat or whatever didn't have any, um, any medicine, shall we say? It was just about really digging through a lot of behaviors. And that was a very big moment for me because that's where I made, made a lot of peace with my father. And understood he was a man and that he, this is, and I understood his reality and was able to completely reshape my relationship with my father because there was many years, even when he came home from prison, that I struggled even to speak to him. You know, and our relationship was obviously thrown off. When my, my father left, I was, uh, I was starting kindergarten, when he came home, I got a license. And so my whole, my whole youth, I didn't know who this man really was. And you can only imagine how someone grows and changes through eleven years of prison. And so it was a very interesting period for me. And, uh, the reason I bring up this time is because this is when I like to say in my life in twenty sixteen, uh, an al, an alpha hippie, the idea of alpha hippie was born. And so I came home from a retreat, all renewed and restored. And someone was like, what were you doing? And I tried to explain it to him and they made fun of me and I said, F you, you don't even know what I'm about, cause you're not an alpha hippie. My friend made this drawing, his name is William. And this wound up becoming the, the logo that, that we have right now. And Alpha Hippie is where I began identifying myself more than more than versus a CrossFitter. And, uh, and so I, I was like, man, this is so amazing, this retreat, I love it, I came home like in August. I hit it off with those guys, Aaron and Orion, those guys thought I was super cool, I was more open and more free. I remember walking, walking in the office, it was Becca, Suzie, Rosio. I told them all about this retreat, I think that was probably one of the first times I actually fully cried how excited I was. And I offered all of them as a Christmas bonus to go to this retreat. I was like the guy that found Jesus, but it was, it was, it was a little different for me, you know? And so meanwhile, Rosio said, I'm in, and Suzie did it online. And so these guys trusted me and jumped into this self-discovery lamp. And then I get this phone call in September from Aaron and Orion. And they throw, they're, they're, they go to this thing called Burning Man, I'm like, I don't know what Burning Man is. So I start doing research and they go, listen, at the end of the year in October, on my property in Santa Cruz, I throw a three day end of festival season party at my house in Santa Cruz. And he, and he goes, do you wanna come? And I'm like, yeah, and I've never been to anything like this, guys. Like I have no idea what it's like to be at these things or anything. But I said, I'm gonna go, they invited me, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna go all the way and this is really gonna happen for me. So typical Angelo fashion, I started doing research on Burning Man, I learned everything about Burning Man. I start figuring out that people go there and they're free and they're, we, they wear costumes and we dance all day, it's really trippy. And so I go, well, I'm not showing up like a complete rookie to this thing. I'm gonna show up like I know what's going on. So I show up to this party, I'm trying to drive around these Santa Cruz mountains and I make it there. This is Aaron, and this is Orion, and this is me in a caterpillar onesie. And I'm hanging out all day with these guys, we're festivaling it up, listening to music, talking about spiritual stuff, just being free. See my friend Aaron, he gets down and I wear this caterpillar costume. And people are like, who's this new guy in a caterpillar onesie? And meanwhile, guys, the nighttime comes and this caterpillar turns into this beautiful butterfly. And I win Rookie of the Year at this party, people didn't know what was going on. All of a sudden, I show up in the middle of the dance floor in black tights and in this outfit, okay? And it was just like a coming out party for myself that this was me. And this was my full expression of me not worrying about if I was gonna be the most macho man in the world or anything like that. It was absolutely beautiful and I felt so free to be myself and then danced and didn't worry about being a tough guy or macho guy. And my whole life was just transforming right, right in front of me. And it was absolutely so beautiful, so this alpha hippie life is here. And, uh, in two thousand seventeen, uh, I'm sorry, and so Rosio goes to this retreat, okay? Now at the time, like Rosio and I tried to date many, many years before, really wasn't our time. And in two thousand sixteen, she goes to this retreat and she comes back. And all of a sudden, she's got like a new scent to me, she's like this new woman. And I'm like, whoa, something smells different about this woman, you know? She's not just like, like a friend, like, you know, there's, I'm picking up a different scent. And then so twenty, right? And Rosio was digging it too, you know, and she's out of this relationship and she sees me as this free man. And, uh, and then I was like, man, you know, Ro, and we were, and she was single, she was newly single this time. And, um, I was just moving out, we would go do like boring stuff on Sundays, like she showed, we would go to the laundromat. She would show me how to do laundry, I, I, that didn't last long, I got a cleaning lady right away to do my laundry, it was the worst time ever. And, um, but we would go hang out and do things. And I, and I said, Ro, you know, why don't we, you know, if we're gonna do this, let's do this. And she's like, okay. And I was like, let's, let's go on an adult date, January fourteenth of two thousand seventeen. I say two thousand seventeen was the year I started courting Rosio, we went on our first date. And those of you that like the movie Pretty Woman, I, uh, I wanted to be Edward Lewis very much, that type of cool, respected guy. So in two thousand seventeen, I put on some, a black tie and we went to the opera, just like in Pretty Woman. This was a very big time for us, this was February, I'm gonna go through our beautiful year. So February, we get engaged, um, and it was absolutely, or I'm sorry, February, we go to the opera. And then, uh, and then right around Aprilish, uh, May, uh, we had a, we had a miscarriage, we lost our first baby, Rosio and I. Um, I don't know if any, many of you know that, yes, uh, we miscarried around that time. And this was already, I already had a, I already had a plan to marry Rosio anyways. I was already convincing Dom of this grand scheme that we were gonna go to Italy, that we were gonna rent a sixty-three foot boat and it was gonna take us from Naples to Capri. And when, when I got on the boat, we were gonna propose to her and it was gonna be the time of our lives. Just like I said, and on him, sure enough, sure enough, guys, this is me in front of the, the front of that boat, I proposed to Rosio and right in the middle of the Mediterranean and everyone around us was cheering for us. And so here's me getting cheering for her, and this is more of our courtship, this was that day, this is Dom and Mary. Uh, this is, uh, Capri, we went up there for the sun coming down. And, uh, this was our engagement photo, this is where we got engaged, this is a real beautiful time for us in our life. And this was the first time I got to go to Europe and even travel across, uh, the, the pond, do all this good stuff. Like I said, guys, with everything I do, I sell out, I wore a Gladiator outfit, first time in Rome, why wouldn't I put on a Gladiator outfit? And walk around all day? And so this was me, my poor new fiance, he's gotta deal with this little kid convincing his best friend that they should wear Gladiator outfits and we would even try to fight each other with the swords like gladiators. Uh, we got in trouble for that, they thought we were just trying to make money. Um, it was super great that year and so as you guys could see, I was developing, becoming more open. Uh, me and Ro were, were having fun, I had a partner that was able to take this new unlocked heart of mine and, and really help me access it because for so many years I denied myself access to it. And, uh, that's why it was so important. Um, as you could see, I, as I won Rookie of the Year, uh, they brought me back to the party next year. Uh, but this time I brought Rosio and this was Rosio's indoctrination to get weird at parties and wearing onesies and all that stuff. She was a unicorn and I was an elephant. And so Rosio, Rosio got to see all the craziness and all the beauty of all that. And in two thousand sixteen, I was even asked to go to South Africa and do my first year of seminars out there with my, with Jason, my original mentor. And then in two thousand seventeen, they asked us to go back and, uh, we were super excited to be there and go back. And, uh, we were sitting across this beautiful big table and, uh, I, I told Ro, I said, hey, you know, we're already engaged, I don't like calling you my fiance, why don't we just get married here? And she's like, what? And I go, tell me one reason why we shouldn't. And she couldn't answer it and like most things, I just stir up the crowd at the table to think, that we get everyone to think it's a fabulous, great idea. And the host of the, the seminars wound up finding this, finding this beautiful, almost fake looking vineyard, perfect vineyard for us to get married in. And, uh, my friend Jason, uh, we asked him to marry us. And, uh, this is actually on YouTube, what's it under, Ro? Yeah, Rolo Wedding, if you guys ever wanna watch the whole thing because we had a videographer and photographer there to, uh, for the seminars, and so we had a free video and photography guy at our wedding. And we did our, this is December third of two thousand seventeen, and Rosio and I got married. And so our courtship was this beautiful year of heart opening adventure for the both of us. And it was just absolutely amazing and I started really learning what love was and having a partner was. Fast forward to twenty eighteen, I like to call this period where I learned to become open. And I dropped from the meta mentality of more is better to better is better. And I'm gonna go through this quickly, cause I do realize we've been taking so much time and I do appreciate you guys hanging out. And so we, we started, I started traveling the world, I was able to see things and do things and the gym was rocking. And we had a beautiful team, Suzie was already a part of us. Uh, this was a safari, of course, if you go on a safari, where I come from, you wear a safari outfit. You don't dress like these two CrossFit chooches, Jason Lyden and his wife, I love them. But for me, I went, bought a three hundred dollar safari outfit because I was not gonna show up like someone that wasn't ready for a safari. Uh, this is me on top of, uh, the Lions Head Mountain in South Africa, I'm watching the sunset, uh, doing all these things. This is me and Ro, we got to go to Sorento to see my, uh, my other dear friend Antonio get married. Uh, and just this openness, this was us in twenty eighteen when we went back to the party. We even got more weird that year, we had the, the furs and everything like that. And just this complete openness, this is Rosio pregnant at my, my Santi's first rave. He didn't even know he was there, but he felt it, I'm sure. And just that's in my other friend Antonio and we just got to travel the world. This was Dom, me and Antonio, three alpha hippies, went to Tomorrowland in Belgium and danced for three days nonstop. The day before I was supposed to go to the CrossFit Games and coach, Coach Joe Corvo, I was flying home from Belgium and just riding him workouts, cause he checked in two days early for me. And meanwhile, I was dancing with the gods and just having this, these beautiful times. Two thousand eighteen, uh, Rosio and I had our official, uh, wedding at, uh, in St. Lucia. And I only had one rule for the wedding, I wanted to be standing in the water where the water comes up. Because this is my favorite part of being at the beach, is when you stand and the tide kinda just runs at your feet. So everyone that wanted to be at my wedding had to roll their stuff up and, uh, be there. It was an absolute beautiful time. And, uh, my brother Dom and I went to Costa Rica, we lived in the Eco Village. As you could see, I didn't have shoes on anymore, I completely sold out to this openness life and, and doing all these things and moving through there. And I really wanted to show this period of my life so that you guys could see, this is when I started becoming more open. And not thinking that life had to be one way or the other. This is me at a, uh, at a party, uh, an island called Ibiza, uh, that's in Spain. If you guys ever wanna go, please let me know, cause I'm in, doesn't matter what time, I'm in. Um, I dragged Dom to an Eco Village in Costa Rica. And it began with a three hour, uh, trek through the mud of the jungle to get there. Needless to say, Dom and I have never been through anything like this ever, it was incredible experience. And the reason I wanted you guys to see this is because this is when I really started learning and growing uh, as a man and openness and new ideas, new discoveries and bigger and different things that I was ready to pursue in myself. Twenty nineteen rolls around, I'm, I'm very interested in this idea of alpha hippie. And even in twenty eighteen, more and more alpha hippie stuff came out. I, I made the shirt, I did the podcast, I even created a course for men. I really started understanding that much like this weight loss journey that started ten years ago, twelve years ago, uh, I, I, I had lost that weight and I felt that freedom, that physical freedom. And then I created O'Hare CrossFit to express that freedom. When I started doing all this self-actualization work, um, alpha hippie was born and it was really, it really turned into me wanting to help men grow. I mean, I wanna help everyone grow, but specifically men grow. Because I know what it's like to just be this macho man that doesn't access feelings or abuses other things to, to make up for it. And, uh, I really knew that I was here to, I could help them because I spent so much time, much like I did with CrossFit, moving into them. And that's really, uh, super important because in two thousand nineteen, there was two births. There was the birth of my son Santiago and this was, uh, a very special time for me in twenty nineteen. And so this was our, our beautiful baby shower that we had here, we were super excited, look at my wife, pregnant Rosita. Such a good time, we had Brandon Powell here, we got to do the ice together, so we were still working and digging in there. This is Santi baby, right? This is Santiago here, uh, early on being him. We took him to Italy at the end of this year, so he already has been to the motherland. Took me thirty-four years to get across the pond, this guy took him three months, what a lucky duck, right? And, uh, so we took him to Italy this year. Um, one of the things that we really have loved doing in our courtship with Rosio, or at least I love, is we get married every year. So two thousand seventeen, we got married, we did the ceremony, two thousand eighteen, we got remarried in St. Lucia. Two thousand nineteen, Dave McInley, who's a beautiful member of our community, he remarried us inside of a church. And so this was the, the birth of and growing of my family. Uh, and then here comes beautiful Santiago. And this was, uh, literally minutes after he came out. Uh, they handed, as soon as we cut the umbilical cord and they were helping mommy out of the bathtub, this was, uh, they handed my son to me and I got to hold my son for the first time in his life, in my life. And he got to embrace me, we had our shirts off so he could feel our skin. So, cause we wanted him to know that this was his family. And it was this beautiful moment and I have a beautiful son. And, uh, you guys have, have seen him in many, many ways grow up and be with us, this is him, George, thank you for this beautiful outfit. It said, Alpha Hippie Baby. And two days before I had my son, I had this vision of alpha hippie and this bigger, bigger plan that was for me. And um, what we were going to do with it and, and how much like before, I wanted to be the CrossFit guy in two thousand and ten. Now I wanted to lead Alpha Hippie and lead men through this new way of being and physical being and moving your body and owning your feelings and connecting to yourself and just developing the best version of yourself. This has all came to me. Two days later, I had a birth of my son. And I was so overwhelmed with this. This is, this was going on September first. And uh, the, and then all through these last six months, nine months, this has been going through my head of how this is what I'm inspired to bring to the world now, as I am inspired to lead what I believe is my part of the mindful Renaissance. This is what we're really stepping into. And this COVID time has even helped me know more now than ever that we need stronger and better men. And it, it was the real inspiration to do this. And I had many, um, I don't even know the right words, apprehensions about stepping into this because I knew in order for me to be actually do this, I needed to create space in my life and void to even do this. And uh, and so twenty twenty rolls around, um, twenty twenty rolls around and, and here we go. We, we have this beautiful Santi baby boy. And all these things are happening to us in our life. This is Santi looking at me hanging out. And also too, we're closing the gym. And now since no one's here, me and Joe Corvo don't wear pants ever. Shout out to me, me and Joe Corvo. We haven't put on pants. Only if we're going to be on camera. But this is what most of our days look like. As soon as we're not on virtual, if I'm working out, Joe's working out, we're the tight brothers. We're neon tights running around here having a beautiful time. And these crazy times have, have only uh, helped me realize more and more of what's going on in our lives, what we're stepping into and who I'm ready to be in the next decade of my life. And also too, it all happened at once, um, this realization of where, um, you know, we were, we were really stepping into. And right as this, right as these moments were, were happening, um, I, I knew I was getting ready to do something with mindful Renaissance and Alpha Hippie. And not working with men only and helping them not only with their bodies, but mentally, spiritually. This is really where I wanted to be. I, I created a program, some of you may know, called Masculine Mastery. And I had a wonderful time doing it, yet I didn't have like the, the energy and space to devote as much as I wanted to it. And uh, and so the, the Friday, Friday comes and we have the announcement of, of what's going on. We're going to close the gym. And the next morning, I call up Suzie and uh, I said, hey, listen, these are very unprecedented times we're stepping into. Something's about to really shift. And Ro and I were already talking about, well, what are we trying to create? What are we trying to do? And what kind of life do we want now for our family? Because twelve years ago, it was just me, ready to push CrossFit. And then Suzie and I were, I go Suzie, take a couple of days, think about who you want to be at the gym and direction. And she sat down with me on Monday that day and she had a beautiful vision and plan for the gym. That I was even more inspired than I could have even thought that she was going to bring to the gym. And this idea of even getting the classes to be virtual and doing all this stuff and really stepping into this was Suzie's, Suzie's way of keeping this all together. And I knew at that time, her, it was her chance to really step into ownership. And so that same day, we had a talk about it and she was ready. And I knew that we were ready. My wife and I were ready to step into these, these next moments. And so this time for us and for me represented living boldly, creating a living boldly. That was first and foremost. And this was after a deep reflection and, and living boldly to me is being courageous. And I have a, I have a son, guys. And he's nine months. And in thirty-five years, he may come to me with a bold idea. Like the mindful Renaissance and leading people to this utopia. And uh, I'm not going to be the dad that just tells him how to fucking do it. I'm going to be the man that he saw do it. What it's like to be courageous and bold. Leave everything you have behind if you have to, to do it. Everything you know, everything that's easy, everything that's comfortable. All the fucking bullshit reasons why people don't live up that hill. I was not going to give him the chance to say, well, why didn't you do it? Because I wouldn't be able to live with myself. I knew that. And I knew that that would crush me way more than anyone that doesn't like my decision right now to leave O'Hare CrossFit. I knew that that would cripple me. That moment that I put my head down and couldn't do that. Or the moment I couldn't tell him to go live out his dreams because I was a salty old man that didn't live out his. And I wasn't going to be that person for him and my fucking family. I knew that it was my chance to step into my glory. And show my beautiful son what it was like to own it. And know that no matter what happens, that we were bold. And that we were ready to live in active faith. And that we were going to create a void so that we could go and do this thing. And it was the, it was the perfect time to start new. It's the perfect time for us to, to step into a new void and do this. I love O'Hare CrossFit. I love it so much. That Friday that they made us close. I came in here to close the nine AM class and no one was here. And I realized at that moment, this COVID thing was really serious. And I came in here at nine o'clock. No one was here. I locked the door. And I cried and danced and, and screamed and wailed in the middle of this gym all by myself to every beautiful song I could think of. And I told O'Hare CrossFit how much I loved her. And how much she means to me. And I said, O'Hare CrossFit gods, I hope I made you so proud. And it's time for me to go. It was the first time in my life I broke up with anything that I loved. And that I couldn't make it break up with me first. And I said, I love you. It's time for me to go do this thing. And I must leave you to do it. I can't do it halfway. Because it's not who I am. And then four hours later, they put out the notice that we had to close. The next day, that was that Friday. You guys remember that Friday? And then they, they put out that notice, we had to close. And I was like, oh my God, the universe hurt me. There she hurt me. And O'Hare CrossFit understands. She gave me the, this, this, the, 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 the space, the plan. Because I broke up with her. I was ready to create the void. And I said, I, I can't do this. This isn't who I am anymore. I'm not Angelo the CrossFit. The CrossFit god, no matter how much I love being the, 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 the coach and the, the stuff and all this. I couldn't, this wasn't who I was anymore. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't who I wanted to grow into. I'm Angelo the Alpha Hippie. And I'm bold and I am free. And I am ready to help men become this bold, unapologetic, unapologetic version of themselves. That if they want to dance in tights or with whatever they want to be, they could be it. This is just how I express it. But I want to help men understand this deep inside that we're so much more capable, so much more beautiful shit. Than just paying bills and watching sports and just being wanksters and not showing up for their family. And this is what I think about day and night. And I broke up with this beautiful place. And then this gym closed and then we had to close the gym. And then two days later, Suzie walks in for our meeting and she's got this beautiful plan. And I had no plan. I didn't know what to do because my heart wasn't here to hold this fucking thing up. Because my brain's been thinking about my son and this other future, this other world. And Suzie walks in here and I said, you know, this is the perfect time for all of this. This is the most beautiful storm. And I said, let's do it. You're going to be it and I'm going to be your number two. And we're going to ride this, this Corona storm out in fine style. Because you are ready to do it with your vision. And I know how to dance in the chaos like nobody else. Because of all of my life and all the experiences I've been through, I called up my damn, damn date. And I dated him for going to jail all these years. I said, they're going to shut down this shit for a couple of months. I go, he went to jail for eleven years. You gotta be kidding me. They think this is hard? You think this is hard? I could do this dancing out my head. Two months, three months, get name it. You have got to be kidding me. I've been through a way harder, way harder stuff. I could do anything. I called him up. I called up my sister. We all laughed at how easy this was for us. How easy this was going to be, no matter what it was. Because we've been ready. Because this is a joke. And I said, Suzie's got this plan and I got the balls to help her through this time. Let's do this. And uh, you know, and this has been our, our beautiful, uh, our beautiful virtual OCF, what we've been running with. Keeping everyone connected, enjoying these beautiful workouts, keeping everything positive as we possibly can. Creating community events and connecting with you guys. This has all been Suzie's ideas. What I've been able to help Suzie with is the, is just the understanding of how to do this mentally and then more physically and, and, and stewarding this stuff and showing up positive and showing up strong and doing this. And Suzie's been through so much stuff. She lost her dad during this time. She couldn't even go see her dad. Because if she saw her dad, she would risk not being able to come in this gym to not do the virtual classes. Want to talk about someone that was ready to be a leader here. Because I told, I told Rosio, I go, this is going to be really interesting to see for Suzie. Because if she comes in, she goes and sees her dad and we have this baby and we're trying to do these classes, she, this is going to be impossible to do. Because what, what are you going to do if she's been around somebody like that? And I didn't even tell Suzie or share that with Suzie. She, she made this choice on her own. And as soon as she made that choice, I go, you see, who's really the leader of this thing? Who's ready to, who's ready to take this thing for, to, for this next decade? Because we're ready to take our thing for our next decade. And so it's been amazing. It's been amazing to see this growth behind the scenes. It's been amazing to be a part of this virtual world. It's been amazing to connect with you guys and do these things and be a part of this community. And just be with Suzie through all this time, working through there. Rosio's done so much amazing work on the backend. And we've just been rocking and rolling during this time. And it's been super, super great. And that's why having Suzie be the leader and a new owner of O'Hare CrossFit is no debate. Because who else should be it? Who the fuck else should be it? And so uh, I'm going to give a little break finally for myself to pee and get some water. And please, not for you guys though. Suzie's going to speak to you guys. Suzie's going to speak to you guys. And then I'm going to jump back on and let you guys know what our plans are. Because you and I both know that this isn't our sound, our, our farewell. We got something special to talk about. So please stick around. I appreciate you guys doing this. Without further ado, my dear friends, Suzie Castro.
Hi, everybody. That was a lot. Um, if you think that was a lot for you guys, imagine being the last nine weeks. Uh, it has definitely been like, pretty much like that every single day. The past nine weeks, um, on Angelo's end and my own end. Uh, definitely a lot of emotions, a lot of high emotions. You get very emotional when there's going to be a change, right? Even if it's for the better, it's very emotional. Uh, this is probably the best kept secret I have ever had. Um, I'm not very good at keeping secrets from everybody. But, um, I have been part of O'Hare CrossFit for a very long time and I'm going to preface this. By saying that, and it's going to make me emotional. There are very few things and very few people even that I love more than O'Hare CrossFit. When I walked in here in two thousand and thirteen, I walked into the old gym. So a lot of those pictures were really amazing, amazing memories. To realize that we've all gone through so much transformation. I mean, the brick and mortar building itself, right? You were from next door to here. Um, Angelo as a person, as a coach, as a mentor and myself as well. Uh, so much change has happened. And I really don't know if the person that I am today and the type of things that I have dared to, to try or accomplish would have happened if I would have never walked in to O'Hare CrossFit in twenty thirteen. And that's honest. I, my journey here is not very different than most of your journeys. I walked in here, I was approaching thirty. I was tired of just running on the track or running down the streets. I wanted something to be passionate about. You know, my life was really stagnant. I had great friends and all that, but I would go to work, go home, go for a run, repeat, right? And I think that's the most uh, really typical story of most people, whether it's running or something else. You're just tired of that routine. And I, you know, I had never joined a gym where I had to sign a waiver. And I had to sign a waiver for the consultation here. And Angelo emailed me back right away, like, do you have any questions? And I was like, I am so scared. And he asked me why I was scared and I really don't know why I was scared. I really had no knowledge about CrossFit. I had no knowledge about CrossFit. I didn't know really what it was about. All I saw was videos my brother sent me of Becca at regionals. Um, but I think deep down, I knew that if I was, if I was going to commit to this, that it was going to be life-changing. I think deep down, I always knew. And so when I came in here and I did that class and uh, decided to embark on it, then I was all in. I was all in with learning how to move because I had never moved that way. I was all learning, was improving. I was all in with the community and being a part of something greater than myself for the very first time in a very long time. And that was O'Hare CrossFit. And I really embarked and took in everything that Ange had to say. So as he's been transitioning and transforming, I mean, so have I. I've been along for the ride with everything. Um, and you know, the journey can be in very different uh, degrees, right? But it was very similar. He wanted to get better. He wanted to be like Josh. And I, you know, just overall wanted to move better and become a better athlete, something that I would have never considered myself to be. And uh, I remember after a couple of years, you know, twenty sixteen, And uh, I remember after a couple of years, you know, 2016, Angelo asked me, if you, would you ever consider becoming a coach? And I was like, no, that's ridiculous. Like, why would I think about that? And that conversation was done. That was it. And uh, a year later, I was like, okay, I get it, you know? I asked, like, is it okay if I intern? And then he was like, you will be my last intern. So. That was it. I did the internship. It was not an easy thing. And with every step along the way, whether it was joining the gym and doing individualized programming. And you know, taking part in the events and the internship, I think deep down, I always knew. O'Hare CrossFit was my life. And with every step, I was making it more and more mine. And so it, it has been a really long and short journey. I started coaching. Part-time here officially, December of 2016. I became a full-time employee, December, uh, June of 2017. And here we are, three years later. You know, so. While I was. Overall shocked, right, by the news that Angelo presented me with. At the same time, I wasn't surprised, right? I, I have never, to this moment, said, why me? Because honestly, like, why not me? I have been a part of this place for the whole time. I love you all so very much. And it's been a really get, a really big gift to have these COVID times for me. When a lot of people are rusty and all that, we've been busy working and. Everything prior from March to 2009 onto March of 2019, it's all been Angelo. And I can proudly say that from then to now, I have helped build this virtual program with Ange. So it is something that I'm very, very proud of. And that is only like, the very beginning of what Suzie's OCF will be like. And while I'm so very happy for all of the changes and for everybody, I cannot even. There's not enough words in any language to convey how appreciative I am. For Angelo to bestow this on me because he, this, he's the same, you know, he, he built this. This is his child. And so with that, I bring a lot of responsibility on not letting him down and not letting this place down as well. So I just wanna thank you guys all for being such active members on this virtual OCF. Because you have really, really kept it going. And I was even like, I don't care. If we lose everyone but these people, like, they have really driven me every single day. When it, to come in and do these workouts and perfecting our virtual form. Because we're not just, every day we're learning and we're getting better at these virtual classes. So thank you guys so much to the community, because at the end of the day, you guys are the actual best. And without you guys, we could have just shut the doors, but thank you so much. And again, I wanna thank Ange because this has been such an amazing journey. From my first class here till right now where we're at today. It's been nothing but a, a bullet going up. So. Thank you so much and I'm going to not say thank you again because I am just getting more and more emotional as we speak. But that's what I have to say about this. And you know, more things are gonna be coming soon. I value everyone's patience. I value the opportunity. And now uh, what I really ask from everybody is just, you know, keep giving us that OCF spirit. Because you guys are OCF.
Alright guys, we're gonna wrap up. We got two quick things to chat about and we'll wrap up so you guys can go on with your Saturdays. So here we go. Alright. Rosio Santiago and I are moving to California. We have chosen my, Marcus Gersey and I are partners of Alpha Hippie. And Alpha Hippie is a. A program that's good. I wanna tell you guys about Alpha Hippie. So we're gonna move to San Clemente. That's where Marcus lives. And this is a place where Rosio and I have always dreamed of living. So we're gonna go live it. And uh, I'm gonna start, we're gonna start our program Alpha Hippie in June, which is gonna be all designed for men. Men for their mind, body and spirit. And obviously, if you know, or if you are a man that is interested in really growing in all those places and really getting uncomfortable. No, you do not have to eat mushrooms. That's optional. Yet it's uh, you know, I am very passionate about leading men through this, this path. Much like I was passionate about leading people through CrossFit. And we're gonna move to San Clemente, California. And over these next months, what, what's gonna happen is, and there's more to say about when we're leaving. And we're gonna talk about that in more than a second. Suzie is, Suzie's gonna be the day-to-day leader and I'm gonna be coaching and guiding her. Through everything, you know, she needs support with. Rosio's gonna stay on as an administrative role. And we're super excited to do that. So my men's program, it's gonna be relaunching. And Alpha Hippie's gonna be going through a full relaunch in June. Like I said, if there's any man out there or anybody that you think that I should be speaking to about this stuff, please. I, I would request and love any help that you guys are able to really help with this. We're super excited to do this. And we leave May 26th, which is the day after Memorial Day. And so here is our, here is our plans. We're gonna have a virtual Murph workout at 10 AM. That everyone is welcome to join us if you wanna do it virtually. But more importantly, it wouldn't be done my way or our way if we didn't do it this way. O'Hare CrossFit is gonna be open on Memorial Day to do this workout in person. I want to invite you guys, Rosio, we all want to invite you guys. To do Murph with us. If you are, if you wanna do it virtual, we respect and love your choices. We honor them. Yet if you wanna do Murph. With us, next to us, spill chalk next to us, do everything next to us. We want you here too. And at 10 AM, we're gonna do this workout. Santiago's gonna be my weighted vest for Murph this year. And everyone is welcome to come do it in person. You could wear a mask if you want. We, we wanna respect all of your desires. And I'm gonna say this right now, this is a send-off ceremony for the Cisco family. And where there is love, there is no sickness. So you are more than welcome to come join us and share this moment in person, if that is something that you wish. And if you would like to do it virtually, that is also something you could do if you'd like to. Either way, Memorial Day, Monday, we're gonna have our Murph workout. Then Tuesday morning, my family and I will be headed out west to begin our quest for uh. For uh, for California. And we're gonna make a few stops along the way to see some friends of ours. And then um. We're going to begin our next chapter, my beautiful friends. And we would love to share these moments with you, Rosio and Santi, baby and I. And uh, let's have a beautiful week. And then Monday, we'll do Murph. Then Tuesday morning, my friends. I will be. And we will be leaving. And this does not mean we do not love you any less. And I hope that if you've learned anything during this talk is. Is we do what inspires us, the same way I would urge all of you to do. And you live a life from deep inspiration. And the rest of it will take care of itself. Just like my angel, John Carosa, my angel, Rosio, my angel Suzie. You create the voids, you show active faith and you step from, you step into them. And then it's time for us to step into ours. And this is where we have chosen to step into them or towards. And we love you and we honor you and we respect you. And this does not mean we love any of you less. We have beautiful memories to share, beautiful times. And it's time for us to step into these newer ones, these different ones. They're not better, they're different. And this is where we are inspired now. And this is where I'm inspired to be right now in my, my life as an artist and a teacher and a guide. And this is where we wanna raise our family in San Clemente, California. Cause we wanna play outside and like the ocean and we're ready to go experience that. And we're gonna be backing up Suzie and helping her with everything we possibly can. Of course, we're gonna come back here and visit. Of course, you could talk to us anytime. Of course, you could come and visit us, just show up at the door and you guys could hang out with us as much as you want. And we love you guys so much. And uh. Santi loves it too. And uh, we love you guys and we hope that either virtually through screen. Or in person with us, 10 AM start at Murph, that we're able to, to share this last workout with you. Rosio's gonna be, Rosio and, Rosio and I are gonna be partners. I'm gonna wear Santi on the vest. You guys can come along and I guarantee you this one thing. If you spill chalk, I won't even yell at you. I won't even, I won't even complain one time. You won't even hear me get mad if you use too much.
I don't know.
Yeah, I won't, I won't even say one word. If you put handprints from the pull-up bar to do those push-ups, too many hands, okay? I love you guys. We love you guys. Whoop, little pits, but that's what happens during this. We love you guys. We're a family. We're always gonna be a family. None of that changes, my beautiful friends. And I hope that you guys know that. I've given you our best. We've given you our best. And we love you. And it's time for us to go and express ourselves in certain ways. And it's time for this chica to go into full bloom and just like she's ready to do too. And let's be real, by her, us moving, this, this allows her to be her full bloom. And it's the perfect time to do it. We'll be supporting her. We'll be guiding her and helping her in every way that we possibly can. As we reopen as well throughout these COVID times and all this stuff. We're not leaving OCF mentally in our hearts. We're leaving here physically. Thank you guys for giving us this time. I did not plan to have a two and a half hour long town hall announcement. Yet you guys, I wanted, we felt that you deserved the full story. Because without the, the announcement, without the story, it's not enough for me. I wanted you guys to really know. Who I was, who I became and who I'm becoming. And I, I trust that uh. That you guys understand it now more than ever and understand us now more than ever. And we love you. And we're gonna see you guys soon. And I hope to see as many of you beautiful faces virtually or next to me. Doing Murph on Monday. Have a beautiful Saturday, everyone. Enjoy this beautiful weather. Thank you for being on this video and watching live you guys so much. Those of you that catch it later, we don't love you any less. Thank you so much too. And to the future, my friends. Because that's all there is. There's now and there's a beautiful future. There is no past. Let's enjoy it together.
Love you guys.
We love you guys. Thank you so much. Have a beautiful day. Bye-bye.